All right, like to welcome everyone. Thanks to the folks that came in tonight. We call the roll, please.
Farmer?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Bachman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. And the first item on our agenda is the, I think we've all seen the council meeting minutes from October 17th. Is there any questions or comments on those?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Farmer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's unanimous. And we have two visitors in tonight, and both Mark know they did not want to speak, but have either of you changed your mind? Dana, you good? Mr. Mark, are you good? Okay.
How about Ellie's don't? Or Ellie's don't?
You want to speak? Yeah, all right. Okay, so that's, that's fine. On the next item is old business, and we have one ordinance. This will be the second of the two readings. Will you read that ordinance?
Ordinance O-102420, an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Clayton classified ordinances.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the ordinance as written by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that that's unanimous. And we have one item of new business. Will you read that resolution, please?
Resolution R-112455, a resolution authorizing the City of Clayton to enter into a contract with the Montgomery County Public Defender Office and Montgomery County Public Defender Commission.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution as written by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And is there any other new business?
I, I mean, I, I would like to maybe have a conversation with council. We can start with that. I wouldn't be opposed to exploring the idea of doing some type of leaf pickup around the city, if possible, if the service department could make it work. I will tell you that Valley Brook and a lot of my ward has continued to put their leaves out just to the curb, and Mr. Gorman, your neighborhood. I, I feel like people are either going to let the snowplows take them, or let the wind take them. And Randy, I mean, do you have concerns of them going down the storm drains, or do we just think that that won't be too much of a problem?
No, I, I don't have any super concern about it. I mean, we've seen some places where they're taking them out to the street. I know Chief Hamlin has contacted many residents about getting them picked up. Some were contracting with contractors and getting them picked up. I'm not super concerned about it. We still will run the broom down the street and do some sweeping. It, it's not a very good machine for picking up leaves, especially if there's sticks and stuff in it, but it will sweep the street.
How equipped would you be to do one pickup around the, the city?
Well, right now, it doesn't look like there's a whole lot out there right now. I mean, there is some, but there's not a whole lot out there. So people have gotten the word. I guess my biggest concern is we did a lot of reverse calling and a lot of things that we did to tell them we weren't going to pick it up. I don't know, getting the word back out again might be a nightmare.
That's why I really would take your recommendation. I mean, if you would say no, I think I would be fine with that, because that's what the strategy was, but...
Yeah, so there are a couple, or a few things that council should take under advisement before you make a decision on this. One, we did a lot of informational push, letting residents know that we weren't picking up for this year because of the budget constraints that we had. We didn't budget for the fuel or anything like that in this year's budget for those items. If we do that, we'll have to augment the budget for this year. Also, there are residents who have already gone out and paid a private contractor to do the work, and I can see those people feeling very disenfranchised if we then say, okay, well, now we're going to do the leaf pickup even though we said we weren't going to do that. Also, you know, I don't, because we didn't do leaves because it's truly a budget constraint, not because we wanted the levy to come across the finish line. And I think that maybe if that were to happen, that that perception would be that, oh, well, you were just holding the city hostage without picking up leaves because of that. I can tell you in the budget that I've prepared for next year, that leaf pickup is back. I mean, since the budget, or the levy did pass, we've put those things back into the, into the budget. So leaf pickup is back on for next year. We also, in the CIP budget, have a new leaf machine, the one that we had taken out last year, in the CIP for 2025. So those are the things I would like council to take under advisement before you make a decision on what you want to do.
Do you...
May I ask Randy or Amanda, I'm sorry, one thing about the trash pickup? So what's the percentage of people that have already mulched their leaves or put their leaves in those trash pickup bags to be taken off? Have you seen it, or do you know?
I don't know, but I mean, I think, given that there aren't, I mean, there are some spots that have piled leaves, but that the city is not inundated with leaves at the curb, that that's probably already taking place. That people are mulching, they're bagging, or just leaving them on the grass because they'll disintegrate themselves over the winter. So I don't, I don't know a percentage, but I do think there's probably a fair amount of people who are already taking advantage of those other options.
The one area in Caldera we was concerned about, the gentleman still had a pile of leaves out in the street that was probably halfway to the ceiling. Chief Hamlin went and talked to him. He was already under contract. So he already had paid a gentleman to come pick them up three times, so.
I just wanted to take it under your advisement.
I know it's, you know, wouldn't be, be directly the same, but do you remember off the top of your head what, you know, approximate cost for leaf pickup we have budgeted for next year?
Oh, it would have been another $65,000 or so dollars is what it'll be.
Okay. I mean, we can, it might, if we did do one, it wouldn't be, it might not be that full amount, but prob, but probably two-thirds, three-quarters at least.
Yeah, I mean, the fuel cost alone, I mean, it costs a lot of money to run the machine.
I think since we know that we're not going to be in the red, and the thing that we've heard the most about is the leaves. We hadn't, didn't hear anything about Sweep Clayton Clean or the shredding event that we have, but we heard a lot about the leaves. And I'm sorry for those people that may have contracted already, but I think for the other 95% of the citizens, I think that we could go ahead and do it. Like I said, now that we know we're going to be in the black for this year and next year, and in '26, we'll be taking care of the fire and the police as we ran the levy on.
Right, we, we budgeted, yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we begin picking up the leaves as soon as Randy can get his equipment ready and make a schedule, not what we've had in the past, Randy, because we don't have that much time. And of course, until this weather ends and we have snow. That, that comes first before the leaves. It always has, and it should continue to do that.
I'd second that.
Okay, it's been properly motioned and then seconded. Can we do a roll call on this one?
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
We shouldn't have to ask me. I mean, I, I can see this going both ways, and I, I do have a concern from the standpoint, it looks like we're trying to hold people hostage for passing a levy or passing the income tax increase. I guess it, it gives a bad perception. But on the same side, I mean, it's relieving people of a heartache and a headache in terms of how to relieve themselves of leaves in their yards. You know, I, I can't ask you to come back to me later. Oh, man. I don't know. I, I really, I really don't know.
We'll come back to you.
Don't come back to me after...
Tina?
I'm kind of on the same lines of Greg, thinking that residents have been told this the whole time, and now we're going to go back and consider it. And some people have already contracted it out. The leaves haven't even all fallen off the trees yet because of the weather being so nice out. So when is that actually going to happen? Is this premature anyways? So that's something else to consider. And then not to mention the fuel cost, the maintenance cost. I mean, it's still a huge expense. And then we also have been announced that the trash is going to pick up the leaves. So for that being said, I probably have to lean to no.
Bachman?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, I, Randy, I got a question. Earlier in the year when this was all being discussed as far as leaf pickup and equipment and everything else, there was a question about the condition of the equipment, in its age and all, whether or not it could do another year.
We did not replace the bearings on that equipment. However, it was greased and put away just like it does every other time. So I don't know that it'll be a problem. I could probably fire up a machine tomorrow. It's going to take us a couple, two or three days to get them ready. We had to put the boxes on the trucks. There's some things we have to do, but they would function, I believe.
I mean, I...
Well, I guess from, when I'm looking at from the standpoint, older equipment, the standpoint of not the longevity for the equipment to continue to run, what happens? The equipment runs and it breaks, or it fails.
If we lose a bearing, we would order a bearing for that particular machine. We have two of them, so one of them would continue to run.
How much is the bearing? I mean, what...
Well, they're not expensive. That's, that's not the cost. It's just the downtime.
No, that's what I'm getting at. It's, you know, the downtime for equipment and repairs and everything else. And it, it just seems like we're creating another line item that was originally cut from the budget to save resources, and now we're saying, throw it to the wind and spend it. And if the equipment stops running now, what do we do if we can't pick up leaves after we started doing the leaf pickup all over again? Now, what happens to people that heard the promise that we're going to pick up leaves and now don't get leaves picked up? We're back to square one? We're going to look bad for not picking up leaves?
I don't know that we go through the effort of re-telling everybody we're going to pick them up. I think we just go around, I think it's too much of a hassle and too much of a negative thing that would be for the city, in my opinion.
I don't think that's what Mr. Gorman wanted.
I think we just pick them up.
And I, I agree.
Whatever's left, pick them up.
In Mike's neighborhood, and Tim's neighborhood, and my neighborhood, there are lots of piles that I think are going to be problematic. And I'm not saying do a full-fledged sweep like Mr. Gorman said. I think you run it and you assess what needs to be picked up. I mean, I think that would be the most common sense thing.
Well, we, now we're talking about picking up certain neighborhoods, but not from others. Now, I think that's being selective and unfair to the persons who don't live in a curb neighborhood, for instance. You know, people in primarily in my area don't have curbs. So if you're saying we're going to pick up in only neighborhoods with curbs, you know, what about the more remote areas where there's no curbs, or other older neighborhoods where there are none? Covering them flat, there's no curbs down there, what about them? Do they get, do they get ignored? I, sometimes I just think we're creating another problem on top of everything else.
So are you prepared to vote?
I, I guess I can see both sides to it. And, you know, I'll say yes, but it's, with stronger apprehension.
Okay, so it passes, yeah, five to two. So I, I will say after the, you know, since the votes already end, I have apprehension on it also, for the same reasons that you guys have. I think my, my choice is made because, you know, we did, we did that out of necessity. It wasn't something that we, we, none of us wanted to do that. But now that we, I feel like we have a little bit of breathing room. I think we, I think we can go back with, you know, like we mentioned, maybe one pass. I think we tried, I, I don't think it, I don't think we should just randomly go out and start picking up leaves, though. I think we need to put out a...
Randy runs point on that.
Yeah, but I'm saying, we need to put out a communication to say, hey, you know, the levy passed, we appreciate you. You know, we're trying to do a little bit here at the end. We're going to make one pass, and next week on this day, you know, is your day or whatever, whatever it is. So just, that's my opinion on it, and that's why I voted yes.
I don't know how this could be done efficiently.
Yeah. Okay.
Just do whatever you want to do.
Okay, so the next item is the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few items for you this evening. First, our city offices are closed on Monday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. Also, you'll note that our January, our first meeting in January falls on January 2nd, which is the day after New Year's Day where the city offices are closed. Would council like to cancel this meeting, or would you like to hold this meeting? We are only required by charter to hold one meeting a month.
I'll move to cancel that meeting.
Is there, I mean, I know, obviously, well in advance, you, you know, but would there be...
So there is the potential, there is the potential for the Warner Village, if that item makes it out of Planning Commission in November, the first reading here in council would be held at the second meeting in December, and then the second reading would be held on January 2nd. We can let the applicant know that if that does happen, that the meeting, or the reading wouldn't be until the second meeting in January.
We did, I know, last summer, there, that happened, you know, with a month between, between some of those meetings, so.
I, you guys have worked very hard with the limited staff, so I, if you need a motion for us to not have, I make a motion to not have the first meeting in January.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so...
Okay, thank you. The next item I have for you, so Member Henning stated to staff that he received a complaint from a resident concerning tree stumps that are left in yards after a tree is removed from personal property. I asked that J. Weiss, curator of Miami Valley Communications Center, the executive director, to send out an email to the managers' roundtable asking if any other municipalities require the removal or grinding of tree stumps. I received only two responses, one from the City of Andelia that does not require removal of the stump unless it was actually pulled from the ground, and then the City of Inglewood, which does require it because they consider the tree stump rubbish. Is that something that the City of Clayton would like to consider? If it is, we can make amendments to Chapter 13 and have that, have tree stumps considered rubbish, so people have to remove them if they cut down a tree?
I, I found it was interesting that only Inglewood responded. You know, driving through a lot of communities in southwest Ohio, I don't see too many of them. I don't see any in Oakwood when we had drove through there, so that was shocking to me. But I personally would like to move forward with matching Inglewood's tolerance towards them that considers the tree stumps rubbish. I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on that.
I do. I agree with you, because I think that we should mirror our neighboring community, and especially to the fact that there are some in our community.
A lot, yeah.
And I think it would just look overall, appear twice, a better image.
So do you need a motion for this, or...
No, it's just language that I can bring, other, other next councilman.
Thank you.
Through, well, kind of dovetailing into our transportation plan. So our active transportation plan, we have two open houses set up. One is at Janus Ward Center on Thursday, November 14th at 6:00 PM, and the other is at Meadowbrook at Clayton on Tuesday, December 3rd at 6:00 PM. This is an opportunity for the public to come in and give input on the plan. These items are being advertised on our social media, on our website, and on the board out front. So tell your friends, tell people to come and participate. The more input we get from the community, the better. We are having the budget work session at 6:30 PM on Thursday, November 21st. So just remember that we have a work session that day. Planning Commission, at their October 28th, or October 28th meeting, voted to recommend in a three-to-one vote that the language change proposed in Section 1141.11C penalties be approved by council. This language will come before city council at the first reading at the November 21st meeting. If you'll recall, that language is changing, and/or maintenance, if used continues, may be deemed a separate offense to shall be deemed a separate offense. So that'll come before council for our first reading on the 21st. At their October 28th meeting, Planning Commission also considered recreational use marijuana. Staff presented them with three alternatives, and then they could have absolutely brought their own, but three alternatives. The first was just to prohibit adult-use cannabis operators within all zoning districts in the city, even if operators are, and as a note there, even if operators are prohibited, individuals are still permitted to grow for personal use. Alternative two was to allow adult-use cannabis in the same zoning districts as which medical marijuana is currently allowed. And alternative three is to allow adult-use cannabis in the same zoning districts as medical marijuana is currently allowed, but limited to the number permitted. Planning Commission requested that staff draft language for both Alternatives Two and Three for November for their consideration. So whatever they decide will come to Planning, or come to city council at the second meeting in December. Same with Warner Village. They will be before Planning Commission at, excuse me, at their November 25th meeting, and that will be before city council on December 19th. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Any questions or comments for Amanda?
The only question I have is, looking to 2025, do we anticipate on doing Sweep Clayton Clean again in the spring and fall?
We do. It's, it's in the budget, as long as council approves the budget that's presented.
And basically, everything else is back on the calendar also.
Yes, as far as events, yes.
Works and all the events?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, hearing nothing, we're going to go to the council comments. We'll start with Mr. Bachman.
Good evening, everyone. You know, mainly wanted to thank, you know, the residents for the passage of Issue Six earlier this week. You know, all the decisions made, you know, made this year for, for things that were cut, you know, it came down to, to the economics of things. You know, it was presented, if we were on the path, the path that we were on, you know, in a couple of years, if we were in the red, and that's a possibility of the state auditor's office basically, I mean, coming in and taking over. I don't know, you know, exactly what they would do, but I mean, my guess would be things like leaf pickup and things like that, you know, would, would have definitely gone away at that point. So, you know, pauses on some things like that and some other events, you know, it was necessary for this year. But, you know, this wasn't a raise given to, you know, to the city. It was, you know, getting us back whole and getting us to, you know, back to the levels that we need to for, for staff, for services, for everything like that, as a whole, especially on the police and firefight side. So it obviously would have wished this happened earlier, but if there's one positive to take from when it happened, it was, it happening during the presidential election, when the highest electorate is out. You know, that's the biggest, you know, kind of pull that we're going to get of, of the city is that. So, so I get, you know, if there's one positive to it happening, then it's that. Other than that, you know, next Monday is the 11th day of the 11th month, so celebrate Veterans Day to, you know, all the veterans in the community. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Tina?
Same as what Mr. Bachman said. I mean, thank you for all the voters. The voters did speak, and so appreciated by the number of people came out, not to mention it was a presidential election, yes, but thank you for everyone that supported Issue Six, and definitely the timing is, was needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merkel?
As mentioned already, Monday is, is Veterans Day, and my, my dad was a World War II vet, so although he's now, no longer with me, I still keep him in mind in terms of Veterans Day. Also, as has been already expressed, thanking the citizens of the city for supporting the city in terms of the income tax increase. Nobody likes to pay more taxes, and that was been expressed by a number of people. But not only do I want to thank those who did vote in favor of the income tax increase, I want to also thank those who got out, and even if they didn't support it, they got out and voted. The fact that they went out, they took the time to express their opinion and feelings, whether it be for or against the fact that they, they made their feelings known. And I've talked to a few persons, one person here in the office, telling people, if you have any questions in terms of how the city is run, if you have questions about the budget and how monies are spent, call the office. Call the city manager. Come in and talk to Kevin in terms of the finances. He'll put the book out on the table and let you see how everything is spent. There's, there's no secrets. And expenditures are approved by council, and expenditures are done by the city manager. They're all, they're all listed and tracked. The books get audited by the auditor's office for the state every year. So if there's any questions about misspent monies, the state will find out, and we will be held accountable. And Kevin's, obviously, in the time that I've been here, has had a clean sleep for his bookkeeping purposes. And nothing he's going to do is going to put his CPA license at risk. And I would never ask him to put his license at risk. But, you know, it's important, the fact that people got out and took the time to vote, let your feelings be heard. And if, like I said, if you have any questions, do come forward and let people know what they are. Go to the website. There's, there's email addresses. You can email anybody on this council and ask a question, whether it be a ward representative or at large. All persons here on this council are representative of all persons of the city. Aside from that, if there's ever any questions regarding the city operations, give us a call. And with that...
Thank you, sir. Tim?
So I'd like to thank the citizens for the election last, or Tuesday night, and I'd also like to thank a group called Clayton's Concerned Citizens for their help in promoting the levy. And particularly, I'd like to thank Dennis Lieberman, who was manager of the group, and Earl Harlemont for his work, and also a lot of the staff, in their own time, came to the meetings and prepared everything. I'd like to thank all of our veterans and wish them a happy Veterans Day on Monday.
Thank you, sir. Kenny?
I also wanted to thank all the veterans here in our Northmont community, not just Clayton, in regards to the election. Thank you to the residents for supporting Issue Six. I, I had very good feelings about it because we always hear so much positive in regards to the police and fire, and the messaging on it this time was so, so in-depth in regards to how their current budget is short and how this will supplement that. So I wanted to say that. Also, wanted to congratulate President Trump and his Southwest Ohio, our own JD Vance on that election, Senator-elect Bernie Moreno. You know, I, I want to add that I hope that this administration really works with and collaborates with local governments. And one of the campaign promises was the no tax on tips, overtime, and social security. So I, I would say we want to see that implemented very quickly. I also hope that the new administration works on something that frankly should have been fixed this administration, and it hasn't. And it's the individuals who work in the public service, whether it's opers or teachers with STRS, and have to work a private job in, in a social security supplemented field, when they retire, they have two-thirds of their social security withheld for them to get the state, state system retirement. I know that we supported, I forget the name of the act that Congressman Turner and others introduced that nothing happened with. So I'd like to see that that happens, and the individuals who have to work in the private sector and contribute to social security get their full amount of social security and their full amount of whatever state system, government pension they have, because it's crazy to me that two-thirds of the social security, it would be withheld. I mean, I know it impacts my mom and so many others here locally. And Dana, I see you here tonight, so Dana York, it's good to thank you in person for all the work you did at Hardscrabble Park. I'm sure you were very blue after painting that building. So, thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Farmer?
Good evening, everybody. Just a few things I had. I'll just echo everyone else's sentiment. Thank you, Clayton residents, for approving the tax. That gives our city some relief that we need, and we'll see how we manage that going forward. A few things I want to point out, November 14th at 6:00 at the Janus Ward Center, come on out and see what has been put together for the active transportation plan. They're looking for feedbacks. Come out and, and provide that. Things you like, things you don't like. Be good to know. And I also invite you to start your Thanksgiving week on the 25th, come out to the Planning Commission meeting to see what the Schnicki group has put together for their area over on Sweet Potato Ridge Road. It's your first opportunity to say what you like, what you don't like, and Planning Commission is our, our first advisory line of recommendation to this council for things like that. And then also, since we vote, we were able to vote on Tuesday because of folks like veterans that stand line, they defend our line of the Constitution of the United States, our ability to vote. So if you see a veteran, thank a veteran. I'm sure they will appreciate it. It's an honor and privilege to wear the uniform of the United States, and I definitely thank them. It's an honor and privilege to wear the uniform of the United States, and definitely thank them and show your appreciation. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I just have kind of one comment. I want to say thanks to all the residents that, that voted for Issue Six, and thanks to everyone who worked on this. Tim had mentioned the concerned citizens of Clayton and Dennis and his, his group were instrumental in getting a lot of stuff out. So I've already talked to Dennis and told him I appreciate that. I thanked him for that. But we also had all of our staff here, I think, touched every house. I think they said that today, that they had actually touched every house in Clayton. They, they went to, you know, door to door with door hangers and were at the polls and just did a lot of work getting, getting the word out. And it's not self-serving only for them. Yeah, it's their jobs, but it's also their city. They work here and many of them live here. And so I'm just real proud of everyone there. I'm real proud of our staff that led the whole, and they were on their own time, yes. That's right. They, yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah, on their own time. They were not paid.
I had to make sure you did the disclosure.
I appreciate that. But I do appreciate our, the way our staff presented the, the information. It was clear, concise, and I think it hit home with, with everyone, and I think that showed at the polls. On the flip side, I want to make sure that everyone understands that, you know, this does give us good breathing room. I mean, it's, there's nothing, no bad news about that levy passing. It's great news all the way around. But for the longevity of our city and the vitality and health of our city, we have got to keep growing. It can't, it just can't be any other way because in five, six, whatever, whatever the years is, five, six, 10 years, we're going to be faced with the same type thing if we don't continue to grow. And I, I know that that, you know, some people don't like to hear that, but, you know, when, I've said it many, many times, if cities don't grow, they die. It cannot remain neutral. So I hope we can all keep moving forward. I feel like we have some momentum now going forward. And I'm real, just real thankful and happy that it passed, and let's just keep, keep moving forward. So again, I want to thank everyone that participated, everyone that voted. I think the elections went real smooth. Mr. Henning, we talked a little bit before the meeting, and I think, at least in his area. I think the whole state, our whole state is very secure and everything. You know, on the election, I, you know, I'm so happy Clayton passed, but unfortunately, every other bet I had lost that night. But you know what? I, I don't feel angry about it. I'm going to go forward and hope the best for everyone. I wish the best to all the new incumbents and leaders that we have from the top down to our local levels. And I'm confident that we're going to survive and we're going to thrive. And with that, I'm done.
I'll move for adjournment.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thanks, everyone, for coming in tonight.